It's six o'clock and welcome to the June 11th meeting of the governing body. I call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Deputy Mayor Valdivia Aquila, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I would like to welcome Curtis Pitts to the podium and he will be giving the invocation. Just a little bit about Curtis Pitts, who I will say has been what feels like a lifelong friend. I don't know, maybe we're younger than, we feel younger than what we actually are, but have known Curtis for some time. He has been a welcome presence in our home and he is known and beloved by our grandchildren. So I just wanted to give a little bit of information about Curtis, that he is a long and well-known community activist. He earned his bachelor's degree in general studies with minors in political science and criminal justice from Fort Hays State University and has studied at the prestigious Scholars Institute at the King Center for Nonviolent Social Changes in Atlanta, Georgia. He is currently the president of the International Institute for Improving Race Relations and presently serves as the point person with the One Topeka Family Coalition. He has over 40 years of civil rights experience with 25-plus years of race relations mediation, more than 20 years of developing urban and sustainable communities, and over 30 years of organizing gang prevention programs at the grassroots level. And so it means a lot to have Curtis here tonight. As we ponder issues continuously of race relations, of the human heart, things of that nature, and how to improve our community running forward, we welcome you.
You bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you with this opportunity to share. We humbly come to you knowing that sometimes we're not worthy. Father God, we come to you in this city, Father God, has done so much for so many across this country, Father God. I ask that you touch the spirits of our leadership, Father God, our council, our mayor, our deputy mayor, our law enforcement heads, our fire department heads, each department head, Father God, and remind them of the task that we have as servant leaders, Father God. I come to you as I watch young folks trying to find their way, hungry, destitute, trying to figure out their place in this world, Father God. I hope that you remind us each day as we're working in these positions, Father God, that it's our responsibility to touch these lives, Father God. Our greatest investment in this city, Father God, is calling to the back of the road, Father God, and we need to bring them back up front so we can teach them, educate them, teach them to have pride in this nation and our community. Make them understand the purity of our constitution and the sovereignty of our nation, Father God, but to do that, Father God, we have to remember the weakest and the most hurt among us as the focal point of our attack and our needs, Father God. As we develop this city, Father God, a place that integrated the world, Father God, and I thank you for the opportunity to come here and serve, Father God. I just wish they understood the impact that they had and why it's so important that when everybody else is talking about everything else in the world, we have to be the glue that brings us back together in a state of mind that induces love and hope and opportunity, Father God. As we see the decrease in homicides, Father God, we know that any too many, Father God, touch this city. Let them understand that in every position arrogance equals the loss of life, Father God. Father God, if those people are homeless and wandering the streets as we get ready for this heat wave, Father God, let us not forget that at any given moment that could be us. Father God, as I think about my parents, God, I thank you for allowing me to be here. God, people don't understand when my mother and my father will fill up our gas tank, my mother and father would have to go in the woods to use the bathroom. But because of this Brown versus the Board of Education, this city, this city council in this time, this place, we're all starting to work and get to a time where we're one nation under God and indivisible. God, we ask you to touch the hearts of the citizen, Father God. Touch them as they interact with law enforcement. Touch the hearts of law enforcement as they interact with the people out there, Father God, as we are brought to some protectors of those in need. God, assume nothing but teach us everything because we know you know everything and we know in this season that it's right now in this time in this city that we have to be the showcase, the flagship, the point person for positive change in our nation, Father God, and you know that you gave us this opportunity. Like in any crisis, any flood, you gave us the tools, humble us, Father God, with love and justice so that we can serve those that are in need. And we thank you once again for the blessing and the opportunity to serve and be soldiers in your armor, Father God. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand as one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, now proceed to the agenda. The first off is roll call. If the clerk will call.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Aquila.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Cale.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
We have 10 present.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to break from the agenda just briefly. Dan, I don't know if you get caught off guard on this. You have that stood-up mic that you can get up here real quick? If not, I can go for, we can use what we have at the podium. Run, run. Because of schedules for the governing body and itself and others, and because of the transitions that we're going through right now, I wanted to make sure that I was able to preside in a meeting where I would be able to acknowledge my friend and retiring Chief of Police, Wheles. So you're here, Brian, as a surprise. If you'd join me up here, I appreciate it.
I was here to present something to the city manager.
Like I was saying, Brian and I have known each other for decades, literally. We've worked together in many roles. We've worked together in the Department of Public Affairs, we've worked together in the Department of Public Affairs. I was able to keep up with him and not anymore. But he has served us well as a chief of police and I want to make sure that I get a chance to acknowledge that publicly for his service. This is his last council meeting, even will be here in official capacity. So I wanted to give you a very small token of our appreciation from my office and I believe on behalf of the city of Topeka. I'll hold the bag for you. You can hit me over. I call a toilet paper. I think they can do more.
The main thing I'm trying to accomplish is not to drop this between. Jane, did you take this up?
Yeah, I'm a non-protected.
Thank you, Jane.
We all give people that we've worked with and appreciate a little honorarium, something that they can take with them to remember their time with us. And I hope that you will display that in the appropriate place and if you can, I will read the inscription. "The City of Topeka, Kansas presents this flag to Brian R. Wheles." I added the initial because y'all know you don't use it. "His first watch began June 13, 1994. He was appointed as top officer in November 23, 2021, and his legacy is secured with the City of Topeka on June 24, 2024. Congratulations on incredible 30 years of service to the City of Topeka. Well done, good and faithful servant in service, Mayor Michael A. Padilla. Congratulations."
I appreciate that. It means a great deal coming from the mayor, who's one that he knows how much I respect him. I can't think of a better example of public service over self than Mayor Padilla, who had a long distinguished law enforcement career and then as a city council member and now as the mayor. So I'm surprised, but I'm never really speechless, am I Sylvia? So if you would indulge me for a minute, there's some people I'd like to thank. I'd like to thank the governing body. I sent you guys an email that meant what I, the way I felt, so I won't reiterate that publicly, but I have a lot of respect for anybody that still works at the craft of public service over self and I know how much you all sacrifice and how much criticism you endure and where your hearts truly are at for service. So I thank all of you for that. I would like to thank my fellow department directors as well. That includes the ones that are seated up here and the one behind the computer who's trying to act like she's not part of the deal. Lot of great friends, lot of good work. You folks know how good the department directors are. Dan, you did a great example of showing us how to overcome adversity today. That was, that was a good example. Most of all, I'd like to thank somebody who's become a very good friend to me and a professional colleague, my compadre chief, Chief Randy Phillips. We didn't know each other before we became chiefs, but we became fast friends and colleagues behind the idea of taking care of our troops. What's good for the troops is good for the city and the community and, and so that's what we both embody. That's already too much talk about me and about this. That award's very cool. It means a great deal to me, but I'd like to put the focus back where it needs to be, on the people out in the streets doing the work that needs to be done, in the offices doing the work that needs to be done. So take care of the troops. Best advice I ever got, take care of them, keep them safe best you can and everything will work out. So I thank you for all of that. Last but not least, and I picked this up from the mayor when he did one a while back, but you, you gotta thank the fam. I wouldn't be here, have accomplished anything without the love and support of my family. And so to them, I will tell you, after this meeting's over, including the executive session, I will be home and this time I will be home to stay. So thank you very much.
And Chief, while you're here, I give you a chance. You can take care of that original purpose for while you're here.
Okay. We can do that. Chief Phillips will be coming up. You'll carry the bag. He already told me he wanted me to talk.
He's a bag man.
He doesn't want to try to follow me. Second responder that he is, we understand.
I always appreciate my blue canaries.
We can have City Manager Neinstedt come up. Not only, not only surprises, and I can walk back up here because I have a mic that allows me to do so. We have a, and you can take the bag as Jane said, and hopefully she takes yours just like she did.
I did.
Mine. And I'll have you stand here for a minute while we say a couple of things. You know, I thought about what I wanted to say. I was actually prepared for this one. We'll see if you can tell the difference between this one and the last one that I did, but I thought about what to say and it really actually became pretty simple. Because one of the first things that City Manager Neinstedt said to me, and he said it in front of a lot of department directors, was this. He said, and he said it to me about 12 to 15 times over the amount of time that we worked together, both in good times and in bad times. And so I know it's really a core belief of his and it simply, he told me this. He said, quite simply, "If someone asks you for your help and you can help them, you should." Not, he didn't say, "If it's convenient for you to help them, you should," or "If it's going to be easy, you should," or "If you think you can get something out of it on the back end, you should help." He simply said, "If you're asked for help and you can help, you should." A lot of what Curtis said in his beginning is kind of what resonated with me. And so I think that's it. I mean, that's really it in a nutshell. The City of Topeka asked Richard Neinstedt for help and he said yes and came out of retirement and I think he's done a great job leading us. And so we wanted to give him a little appreciation and I'll have Randy read it here in a minute, but it's from all of the department directors, public safety team, lead, police and fire, because in our lines of work, doing what you say is all that really matters and City Manager Neinstedt has embodied that. Richard, let's give him a round of applause.
So this is presented to you, Richard U. Neinstedt, interim city manager. An appreciation for your leadership and honorable service, Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, 2023 to 2024.
Thank you so much. Mayor and governing body, thank you for putting up with me the last year. When my good friend Neil Dobler and Amanda Stanley gave me a call about a year ago, I was sitting out on the patio with my wife. I don't know, I might've been drinking or something, I don't know, but, but she kind of overheard the conversation and when I hung up, she said, "Well, are you going to do it?" "Yeah, I think so. It'll only be four to six weeks." But I can't tell you how honored I've been to serve as interim city manager and to help get some things done, help correct some things, help steer the ship and work with an outstanding staff, outstanding department heads, outstanding governing body. And it's been my honor to serve in this capital city and you have to remember, there's only 50 capital cities and I was able to be in one. You're on a good, you're going in a good direction. You have good people here working with the city. You have good elected officials and I wish you nothing for the best and thank you for this opportunity from the bottom of my heart. And I do have to tell you, I did ask Rita that night, "Do you want me to do this?" And she, I said, "If you tell me no, I won't go do it." And Rita said, "Well, you know I'm not going to tell you no, so here I am." Thank you. Well, as they say at the awards ceremony, if this is on, I can tell whether these are not, and the envelope goes to Richard Neinstedt. And yes, Jane got a lot of tape into this one, but if you would open that, I appreciate, it's a way for us again to show our appreciation. She does all kinds of things in the office, believe me. And while we're doing this, I want to acknowledge that our friend firefighter made these awards possible, so they're very unique. You can't buy them at the store. They're one of a kind. So we wanted it to be a memorable piece from Topeka in your time with us. Do you need a?
Lots of memorable.
Oh, I bet, yeah. Can you get, can you get it?
The thing you have that night.
I'd like to read this. "The City of Topeka presents this flag to Richard U. Neinstedt in appreciation for your stewardship, commitment, and dedication to our governing body, staff, and community. With respect, Mayor Michael A. Padilla, 2023 and through 2024. Thank you, Richard, for being there with us to watch that wall." So this is the reason I'm able to do this, because of my wife, who through our marriage, through my entire career, has always been there to support what I do. Not always necessarily with a quick smile, but she's been there and I appreciate the opportunity that you let me take on a year ago. We had to put things on hold, but I think we're going back up to that after, after we close out this session, we move on. I thank all of you, all of you. Neil, thanks for calling. Amanda, thanks for calling. Both good friends. It has been an honor to work with all of you and to work with the fine citizens of this community. You're on a good path. There's a lot of issues out there. One of them is homelessness, but I am convinced that this governing body continues to work with this, continues to be the voice of homelessness, of what do we do to try and help mitigate that, that you can get that issue solved. You have the will, you have the resources, and you can do so. Thanks. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to express our gratitude to both these gentlemen. We'll move now on to business of the governing body. We'll go to agenda item number two, if the clerk will read.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of John Nave to the Worceburn University Board of Regents for a term ending June 30, 2028. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Michaela Saunders to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2026. C is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Luke Ben Simon to the Topeka Human Relations Commission to fill a term ending June 30, 2026. D is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Alyssa Snively to the Topeka Housing Authority Advisory Board to fill a term, excuse me, term ending June 12, 2028.
Okay, you've heard the appointments as read. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Cale.
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Valdivia Aquila?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
We have nine yes, motion carried.
Okay, motion is being carried. We'll move to agenda item number three, presentations, if the clerk will read. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we do that, my, my apologies. For those who have been just reappointed, if you're in the audience to see Michaela, if you'll stand, please, so we can acknowledge your presence and thank you for your service here in Topeka. Okay, now we'll move forward with presentations.
First one is the land bank update.
City manager? Mayor and governing body, Quinn Cole, planning and development management analyst, and Rianna Friedman, who is director of planning and development, will make this presentation.
Sure. Good evening, mayor, governing body. Gosh, don't lean on this table. So quickly, just want to make a couple introductions in case you've not had the opportunity to work closely with the gal sitting next to me. This is Quinn Cole. She's our management analyst in the planning and development department. Quinn started at the very end of May of last year, so she's been with the city for a year now. And one of the great things about having her on board and being a part of our team is that she's helped us work on some of these initiatives that we're not sure exactly where they go, things like the land bank that take a lot of detail and attention and research, studying what other communities are doing to make sure that they are successfully integrated. And Quinn has been thoughtful and detailed throughout that process and so I would love to allow her the opportunity to present this to you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Today I'm going to give you an update on where we're at with the land bank. So what we're going to go through is first I'm going to introduce the land bank conceptually just to refamiliarize all of ourselves with it, then I'll walk you through what we've done to date and then we're going to talk about our next steps. So to begin, we adopted the land bank in May 2023 as per a recommendation from the 2020 housing study and the purpose of the land bank is to serve the public purpose of providing for the orderly, planned, and reutilization of abandoned, tax foreclosed, or otherwise underutilized residential property. I highlighted residential there because at this time we can only use residential properties and we have not talked about using commercial properties yet. And this is with $500,000 fully funded for a three-year pilot period. The Board of Trustees was appointed by the mayor and it includes a city council member, which is Councilman Duncan, our planning and, planning and development services director, Riannon, as well as three members of the public, one of which is... as well as three members of the public, one of which is here today, Manny Haron. And we can acquire properties through market purchases, donation, tax sale, or entity transfer only. I want to point out that we do not have authority for eminent domain. So so far, we gathered our Board of Trustees for the first time in November of 2023, and they have been working diligently to design our administrative processes and framework. There was a lot of collaboration with other land banks in the state, so they put a lot of thought and work into it. And we've also collaborated with the IT department to get a webpage running and design an interactive map. This is a very important piece of the puzzle because it is our user interface for people interacting with the land bank, as well as it meets statutory requirements to have our inventory out to the public. We've also selected a first set of lots for transfer into the land bank. We collaborated with basically every department in the city, code, fire, public works, utilities, and planning, to identify some of the prime developable vacant lots that the city already owns. Four of these lots are expected to be transferred at our June 25 Board of Trustees meeting. The same team also came up with five vacant structures out in the city, and they are on our long-term docket for acquisition. So our next steps include officially acquiring those parcels as official land bank inventory, designing and initiating a process for acquiring parcels with vacant structures but owners, launching the public, launching to the public for business in late June, and marketing our inventory to start our first sale. And that has been an update on where we're at with the land bank, and I will stand for any questions.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I saw Councilman Duncan on the news, I think it was last night or this morning, and now we're having this presentation. And it is so epic that everything is starting to move through. And Rihanna and I just want to say, it sounds like Quinn has been invaluable, but you are the face, you're one of the faces of the new kind of director that is in everything, trying to help and make everything better. And I think that the land bank, I believe, is going to be one of those things that helps push Topeka, move Topeka forward. I had a meeting, it was about two weeks ago, with, I don't know, about eight or nine people from Topeka Jump. And we met at City Hall. They had a number of questions for me. It was basically on the unsheltered population. But one of the things we talked about was the land bank, and they were asking questions about it. I said, you know, I go to you guys. It may seem like this is a long time, but for the intentional effort that's been put in by councilmen, by you all, it's going to be worth the wait because you don't want to get it wrong. And I think that's something that you articulated in the, you know, media piece that you did. So I'm really excited because it sounds to me like we're doing, again, that breaking down of the silos with all of the departments that kind of interface with these vacant properties. You know, we're lending a hand and bringing these, help bring, you know, bring these vacant properties to the table as well. And it's going to be really exciting to see how all of this moves forward. And just thank you to everybody for their really, really hard work.
Councilman Kell.
Now, how much of this has been looking at vacant lots where no, nothing's on the property, and how much has been looking at possibly renovation of, of property that already has a building on it?
Yeah. So at this point, it's been a collaboration of both, but initially, starting with some of the vacant-owned property that the City of Topeka already owns. There are properties that were acquired that had dilapidated structures on them that the city took in. And so looking at how do we bring those back online and getting them into the hands of people and putting them back on the tax rolls and getting some affordable housing developed. But then, secondly, also looking at structures that have, you know, been delinquent, have caused issues, whether it's code, fire, and just really trying to pay attention to that to see what that could look like as a phase two of the pilot.
Yeah, I just think if we can find those ones that are easier to kind of just flip it and go, it should take less time and less effort, and we can get those, those houses back going faster also than just a vacant lot. So especially just instead of just tearing them down, because sometimes that is the case, no one lives there, so it's torn down. So if we can get it flipped back over to a livable property, that's what I'm all for.
Councilwoman Hill.
Thank you. Is there, if this question's premature, just tell me. But if with this acquisition of some land, with the idea of moving it as well as these structures, is there a plan for how you want to do that yet?
Yeah, I can take that. So the first five lots that we're going to take in, or at least four and five, were vacant lots that we said, why does the city still own these? And they were just, again, as they said, utilities purchases to kind of clear out or vacant spaces. They're, they're all in the middle neighborhoods. One of most, four of them are probably single-family homes. One of them's a large enough lot that it could either be duplexes or a multifamily, which is so, which is good. It's kind of exciting. So yes, but then, then to your point, we did go to police and fire and code enforcement. We said, what are your worst problem homes, like collectively, and that are vacant? And that's where these first five we're going to look at. Hopefully, we can acquire them, whether that's tax sale or working with the current owner, and that's the process that staff is in now. But to move it forward, once this website is up, it will allow individuals who want to participate in this program. So developers, remodelers, or the rehab folks who are doing that work, to apply for this program and say, I want to be one of your people who can acquire this land or this property, because this board will vet each of them. Because if you're, have back taxes, or if you've what we deem a problem developer in our community, we all know who that shortlist is, we don't want them to participate in this program, right? It is closed to them, and we're very public about that. We want good local partners who are from this area, understand this area, and are, understand that a piece of this program is infill development, you know, low to moderate income development, affordable housing. That is the primary goal. We need people to understand it. So to your point, once that website is up, there will be an application process. And once those people apply, we'll, we'll bring them in, talk to them. We've also going to set up some meetings with some, like the, the local housing association stuff is going to bring people in so we can meet with them and say, this is how the program works. It's now open for business. If you're interested, ask your questions. And so once that piece of this is done, then we'll start working with them to develop and what that looks like for them. In some cases, it will be a sale to them at a price that makes it affordable to them. In some cases, we're going to give it away, because that's the whole point of this. And as we talked about, we approved this. There's a whole list of things they have to do and clawbacks if they don't follow through. But yeah, that, that is the goal then, is to start to move those into reputable hands.
Well, and that, that was my question there, which you answered at the end. So I guess we'll just wait and see what you do.
Yeah, so us too, a little bit. But that, but it'll be exciting once we see, because we've already had people reaching out to us saying, how do I, how do I become a partner with you? And we're like, it's coming, we promise. After this presentation, the end of the month, that stuff will be up. And same with, we're getting calls about people who are interested in either giving us or selling us properties, and those all have to be vetted. Same, but there will be a process for that on the website, too. If you have a property you're interested in us looking at, great, fill it out.
Get in trouble.
Yeah, come in, we'll come take a look at it and see if it fits within the scope of the program. Yeah.
Thank you.
I will add, and Rhiannon deserves a lot of credit, but she will also be the first to tell you, we would not be this far in the process if it weren't for Quinn. She has deep dived this about as deep as a person can go into it, and probably looked at more of these across the state than any other human should have, but to the benefit of this board and this group. So Quinn deserves a lot of credit for bringing us samples and hooking us up with a couple of communities to talk to and walking us through the process and making sure that we're here to this point. So I want to make sure that that is, that is put out in the universe. I also want to say that the board itself knew coming in and has understood, this is not a passive board. This board has to get down and dirty and do the work. And as we move through these properties, that's only going to get worse in that capacity in terms of more time, but they're aware of that. And so Jim Reardon and Shemike King Sims and Manny Haron have really dug into as community members to, to do the work. So they also deserve a lot of credit for moving this forward. So I wanted to, want to make those points.
Thanks, council. Any other questions, comments? Acknowledge that Manny's in the audience this, this evening, and thank you for your service, Manny. Appreciate it. Thank you both. Thank you, Quinn and Rhiannon. Thank you. We have a second presentation if the clerk wants to announce.
2024 legislative session update.
Okay. City manager?
Sorry, I was with you.
Sure, I'll take it. Next, we have Whitney Damrin, who is the lobbyist for the City of Topeka, here to give you a legislative update. I'll just take a second to say that Whitney has been fantastic to work with all year. He keeps us informed on bills, has answered a million questions, and shepherded an awful lot of people over there to testify for us today. And I personally appreciate when I managed to check out for the last six weeks into a hospital. Whitney did my job and his and everything else in between. So Whitney's here to give you an update on where we're at, since we have a special session, so you get bonus legislature this year.
Thank you so much. Good evening, mayor, members of the governing body, members of the city staff. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and visit. This is a little bit of a trip down memory lane. In 1999, in that era, I represented Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, and, and we were able to pass the land bank legislation. A few years later, I had the opportunity to represent the City of Topeka. And City of Topeka was interested in a land bank, so we brought a bill for Topeka. After we'd made it through the House, a number of other cities said, well, that's like a pretty good idea. How about us getting in the bill? Because our bill was Topeka only. And like, why not? So City of Topeka kind of led the way for the rest of the state, being able to have a land bank. I'm glad to see it's becoming active and useful. We had a number of bills that we weighed into this session. Many of them were not useful to the City of Topeka, and Amanda and her team spent a lot of time taking those on. Want to talk a little bit about what comes up next Monday and Tuesday, and that is a special session. And to talk about a tax bill, there were three major comprehensive tax bills sent to the governor this year. She vetoed three of them. Legislature was unable to override any of them on a veto, even with super majorities by Republicans in both the House and the Senate. So true to her word, after the veto session bill that was vetoed, she said she'd call a special session. That has been set for next Tuesday, June 18. Once the date was set, that, that really kind of enabled the legislature and Republican leaders to begin visiting with the governor's office, as we understand, with a target date to try to get something done. Another issue that's kind of creeped into the State House, and you've probably seen some of that, is a Starbond bill to potentially try to entice the Kansas City Royals and/or the Kansas City Chiefs to move to Kansas. And so that legislation is likely to come up next Tuesday as well. Hearing rumors on the tax bill could be some good things for cities and counties. There's been a lot of pressure to do something about property taxes. So hearing that, we could see funding of LA VTR at some level, not an insignificant level, but perhaps for three years and then sunset the program. So perhaps live to fight another day, see something funded that hasn't been funded in 20 years would be good. Some other tweaks to income tax, property tax statewide mill levy on, on schools, increase the exemption there and so forth. So we'll see what that looks like when legislative leadership unveils what the tax plan looks like, and hopefully they're in position to hit the governor's top-end number, which is about $400 million of total tax relief, of which the legislature has already passed $45 million. So that's, it's kind of the range of what they have to work with, with not drawing too much of the governor's ire. In regard to the legislation we got into, we kind of went back and looked at all of the testimony that Amanda and all the city prosecutor's office, municipal judge's office, people in planning, and some others put together. And we weighed in on, on more than 20 bills this legislative session, and most of them, most of them went our way. Most of them were not things we spoke in support of. So I'm going to, I'm going to run through those and happy to, to stand for your questions anytime throughout or at the end. One of the issues that's caused a lot of aggravation for municipalities is the so-called government competition bill that is led by Health Club owner-operator of Wichita, who quite frankly, has a national chain of these facilities, who does not like competing against public sector, in particular, the YMCA's of Wichita. And he's brought legislation for more than a decade to provide some kind of tax relief to health club facilities. That, that bill has morphed into health club facilities, childcare facilities, and restaurants. It's then morphed into some kind of a tax credit for those located in close proximity to publicly subsidized entities. And the governor's vetoed every time. Other issues that get put into the same bill with that, at least under this administration, know that their bill is dead. The governor won't sign that bill. And so you get eight or nine other pieces put into a bill with that, and it's like, that is not going to happen. I don't see that coming back for the veto session. I think they're done with that, but I would expect it to come back in 2025. Reinstituting LA VTR, the legislature leaders made it clear they wanted to eliminate the statute itself and do away with LA VTR, Local Adverlorian Tax Reduction Fund, because it hasn't been funded in 20 years because of the budget. Again, a lot of pressure on property taxes. I know Councilman Spencer Duncan worked hard with House and Senate leaders and tax chairs, and, and the legislators are asking for accountability. If we give local units of government funds to reduce property taxes, how can we ensure property taxes are actually going to go down, or money is just not moved around and, and used for other purposes? And that is a challenge. But the public is very interested in property tax relief, and, and that potentially comes into a tax bill, and so that would be a good thing. And, you know, three years from now, we'll see what the legislature wants to do about it then. Maybe they don't want to take it away if it comes to pass. So we've had legislation on municipal courts and fingerprinting requirements that caused some frustration with the City of Topeka, restricting cities and counties from proposing zoning changes. That came out of issues over in Johnson County with a couple of cities that they had some, some pretty hot local issues. Unfortunately, local issues come to Topeka, brought a lot of people from the City of Westwood and I think the City of Prairie Village over, looking for some kind of relief that would have affected all cities. I don't know how many testimonies the league provided for that hearing, but there were pages and pages and pages of cities that weighed in on that. Prohibiting public money for lobbying, thank goodness that was rejected, so I can stand before you today without making this a nonprofit initiative. Municipal court determination of competency created challenges for the city. That one went away. Prohibit use of eminent domain authority for solar. We look at eminent domain bills because they potentially creep into municipal authority. That one did not. Civil asset forfeiture, that was a big issue in the House and the Senate with two different kinds of bills that, that came forth. They ultimately passed the House version, which was more favorable to cities than what the Senate was looking to do. It will create changes to asset forfeiture laws and give more rights to those who are aggrieved by, by such matters to be able to seek redress in the courts and expedite ability to get some kind of a hearing to get their property back if they're unjustly accused. A driver's license bill that probably falls down upon the cities eventually to provide a method for people to have their driver's license restricted for non-payment of fines and so forth. Department of Revenue has said, that's a local issue. The judicial branch has said, we're going to make that a local issue. Will become a lot of paperwork of trying to figure out the people that are affected by this, what kind of a payment plan you put them on, how you get them back on the street, and ensure they have insurance and so forth. So it doesn't take effect till 2025, so there is some time to hopefully get a better handle on, on what the implementation of that will look like. Had another one-off bill to require cities to reconnect property to city sewer system. Again, one senator with a local problem for her personally creates a problem for everybody. Again, Councilman Duncan, I know spent a lot of time on that particular issue. Legislation to prohibit cities from regulating plastic bags and other containers such as carryout food. That bill passed again, but it passed and would have gone into effect after the City of Lawrence already implemented their own so-called bag ban. Governor vetoed that bill. Cities were kind of moving in that direction, local control. And I think the decision out of the governor's office was, you're a little late on this. Cities are already acting. I don't want to go back and unwind what they've done. Mandating or allowing Mandating or allowing nonpartisan candidates to identify a political party, another bad idea, that obviously municipal elections are nonpartisan, and if a candidate was allowed to not file as a Republican, but say, I'm a Republican, and have that put on a ballot would be confusing to the voters. You also run into conflicts with a party, saying they're not our candidate, we don't support them. But that one went away. Mandating certain contractual provisions for municipal agreements, that was something that we were able to essentially have affect cities of the second class and exempted out cities with the first class. Open records fees, that was another disaster bill that would have allowed virtually unfettered access and requirements for cities to respond to open records requests that could be extremely extensive and expensive and put significant limitations on the ability to recover your costs, both for research as well as copying production and so forth. That one went away, came out of committee, but went away. Evidence of domestic violence in municipal court. The city supported the bill. That bill did fail to advance. There was people on both sides of that issue. No impact home-based business act, city of Topeka opposed, that bill went away. The idea that people should be allowed to have a business in their home, make a living. Very few restrictions on what that looks like. Put a lift in your driveway and work on cars, run 24-hour restaurants, I mean, you name it, the limitations were just simply not there. And the city of Topeka actually had provided testimony that said, we work with our community and people that want to do that. And quite frankly, the way it usually works, if you're quiet and you do your things without affecting your neighbors, we probably don't know about it, we probably don't hear about it. But if you do something or your neighbors are paying attention to it, that gets on the city's radar screen and we do something about it. That bill failed to advance. We were supportive of legislation to provide funding for homeless shelter infrastructure. And a couple of bills in that regard, those ultimately did not pass. City Attorney Amanda Stanley testified numerous times on that issue. I think people are still looking at the U.S. Supreme Court, a potential decision coming down on that matter in a matter of weeks. And we'll see what direction cities and states are provided for with that. That could provide some guidance to how municipalities can deal with those issues. Legislation on appearance bonds to essentially change that process in favor of a limited number of bonding companies that were trying to rewrite the laws to benefit them, and something law enforcement wasn't necessarily in favor of. That bill went away. The Kansas Gun Rights Preservation Act did not advance. And then just kind of a couple of other things that are happening this year. Obviously, it's an election year for the House and the Senate. We have 11 senators who've chose not to file for reelection, including Senator O'Shea here in Shawnee County. We have, and the two people in that race, one is from Omegle, the Democrat, and the Republicans from Manhattan, so Shawnee County is going to effectively lose a resident senator. In the House, there's 18 incumbents who chose not to seek reelection to Senate seats, including Representative Vic Miller, the House Minority Leader, but he's running for the Senate, so he's trying to hang around. And then I believe 11 of those are actually running for Senate seats. So some of them hope not to go away. Again, election year will reduce what we see from interim study topics, so we have a sprint to the primaries, starting right after the special session. My stack of campaign solicitations is already about that high. More to come. That's okay. But so the race will get underway, you know, pretty much in earnest then. You go through the Fourth of July break, and then lots of parades and, you know, sprint to the August primary and then the general. So that's what has happened, and that's what's going to happen. Happy to stand for your questions. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Whitney, I know you're saying on HB 2723 that it was, you felt that there was a lot of, just waiting to see how the Supreme Court moves their decision. But you're up there all the time. What is your pulse about how the party at the helm is wanting or not wanting to deal with providing needed dollars to municipalities that are actively trying to deal with the unsheltered crisis?
So we had legislation led by the city of Wichita, who is looking for funding for housing, and that was their primary objective. And we've seen other cities that have followed that model. We have a special, a standing committee on welfare reform that had hearings on a bill last session and again this year, significant extensive hearings. There's an out-of-state interest that has led or been active on testifying on that bill. Their approach is enhanced law enforcement and essentially criminalizing homelessness in some respects. So if people are on the streets, people are where they're not supposed to be, we arrest them, we put them in jail. That's a very expensive proposition. It's not very helpful. And that has resonated with some legislators. And so the counter, or at least kind of what goes along with that, is, yeah, we should not be providing room and board to people who are homeless. We turn into a homeless magnet. The bill was close to coming out of committee, and in the end, the chair decided not to bring it forth. There was also a funding proviso on a Senate bill to fund up some things that the Kansas Kdad's Agency on Disability and Aging was proposing. That was taken out during the budget debate, and so essentially the legislature did nothing substantive on homelessness issue.
So it's seduced, then, what you're seeing, that they want to criminalize homelessness as homelessness and perhaps not understanding that it's going to cost more to jail. There are already full-to-capacity jails, and I mean, it's nonsensical.
Certainly, the municipalities are standing up for that. I don't think the majority of the legislature wants to do that. I think that bill is not well-received when that was heard last year in the committee. I mean, people lined up outside the door to take that bill on. But they get an audience and they get people talking about it. You see some cities and business owners that are frustrated with homelessness issues. Certainly, the chair has indicated that's his priority, public safety, business interests. It's been his state of priority on homelessness.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, I don't know what, I think it was a Senate bill, but I'm not absolutely sure, that we had on our legislative agenda, that we pushed out a policy in finance that had something about giving municipalities the ability to, you know, when it comes to a living wage and increase, I don't know, that would be an ordinance. Did that get any traction at all? Does anybody know?
No, I think our direction was, if we had the opportunity to bring that forth or support that, we would. There was not legislation directly related to that where that opportunity.
There was a bill, it just never even got a hearing, so.
So as the legislature ups their pay, everybody's just supposed to deal with theirs at their level. I get it. Thank you.
One issue that I failed to mention, it's in my report, but, you know, we supported the rail legislation that we had a lot of people come into the Senate and testify in favor of that bill, and it passed, I don't recall, 39 to 1 or unanimous or something like that. Went to the House and had a lot of support for that from stakeholder groups and people interested in rail service in Kansas. The House Transportation Committee did not hear that bill. I had conversations with the chair. The official response was, they've not seen feasibility study on how to cover ongoing expenses for that. Kdot had stepped up and had offered up substantial revenue over a period of 10 years to help support the effort. Legislature said, we're not ready to commit those funds until we understand better what the costs are going to be and how the stakeholders are going to help pay for this. Had great support in the Senate, got shut out in the House.
Councilman Kell.
Kind of piggybacking on what Councilman Valdivia Akala said on her first question. How much is of the homelessness issue when it comes to the state is just, it's not our, we don't have that problem, it's not our problem? Or if we do have that, we're just going to transport them to a city and say, oh, here's a place that has help? But how much of that, do you think are those representatives that are sitting there saying, we don't have this problem, so why should we invest the money into that? When it's only about 10 cities, counties and the state that really have an issue?
Well, I think we have state agencies who are interested in the issue, who have been helpful, who have retained experts, who have offered those consultants to the city of Topeka, Salina, Wichita, Lawrence, and some other cities have taken advantage of that. I think there's a lack of resources for those agencies to deal with it. I think they do look at it as local issues. They don't, there's never really been anything that's risen up to the level of a statewide plan or program to coordinate or administer homelessness. It's more of a one-off. If a city comes to the state, you know, they'll deal with them kind of on a one-on-one basis. There's not a designated secretary or undersecretary assigned to homelessness who's trying to coordinate some kind of statewide solution. I think the challenges we also run into in the legislature is you do find cities that have become more attractive to homelessness and have been put more resources towards it. It can increase the challenges that they have as people go there and expand what the homelessness community is. So certainly seen that in Lawrence. We've seen some efforts for the cities to try to figure out some kind of a housing solution that makes financial sense, converting hotels. We've seen that at one over in Johnson County, city of Wichita is doing that. I think we're seeing some shelter enhancements in Salina as well. But no, there's not really statewide coordination, and thus, it hasn't been driven into the legislative process as well.
Unfortunately, as you bring up the agencies, you know, as a person that was the recipient and worked for some of those agencies, they hide behind state and federal law so much, they really don't get anything done to fix the problem. That it's, you can do so many studies, but if you're not going to do anything about it, it's kind of hard. And I think that's part of, a term of our problem from the state level is, so many of these counties and cities don't have the issues that we have with the number of homelessness that, in their mindset, it's not their problem, why invest in, you know, or, has been proven, they just transport them to another town.
I would agree. I know your interim city manager and city attorney and I had meetings with state agencies and other legislators, and some feel frozen by federal court decisions. Some municipalities will move forward absent clear direction that we're seeing, and others are, quite frankly, looking to what the Supreme Court does with the issue likely yet this month. And in our conversations with the city attorney, you know, we've thought perhaps 2025 provides an opportunity, if you have more clarity, whether it's at the legislative level or a municipal level, for some more clear options on how to deal with homelessness.
I think also to your point, Councilman Kell, the city of Topeka has spent a lot of time educating the legislature. We were at the special session last summer. We had the opportunity to suggest a national city expert, which the legislature did bring in to talk about those things, recognizing that not all cities are the same. We've tried to really be out forefront, explaining the problem in a way that you can understand if you're a small city or a large city. There are small cities with significant homelessness issues that people don't think about. Concordia's had a lot of issues over the years. It's really about where you are on certain interstates and where are resources and where are transportation and where are you at on various things. So as a city, we've really tried to be an education piece as well as an advocacy piece, because if you don't have that foundation education, then you're never going to get a vote.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Just, this is kind of continuing this conversation. I think that looking forward to the next legislative session, since we're going to have happy legislators that are going to get a huge pay increase, and so, you know, they'll be all there waiting, and the Supreme Court decision will have come through. But I think that one of the things we may have to consider, and I don't know if it's part of what we do when we go there, is bringing the numbers to them about what the numbers look like if we start criminalizing instead of providing cities that are really trying to wrap their minds around this, right? Develop a plan and not just throw money against a wall, looking for real plans that are going to work and knowing that we need help. But bringing that comparison to them, what it looks like when you just criminalize homelessness and throwing everybody in jail and having Brian Cole deal with it, you know, at the Shawnee County jail. And try to do some of that dollar component to them versus what can happen when you can supply money to a municipality. Somewhere in Wichita, Kansas City, Topeka, there's got to be somebody that can do that. Because I personally, like you're saying, Councilman Kell, I mean, when I hear you talk, what I get a sense of is they do not understand the complexity of it, about how we have so many that are on the verge of becoming homeless. You know, we've talked about this before. The elderly are supposed to be the new face of homelessness. Those that can't make a living wage and that are, you know, cannot pay their rent and could be right on the verge. So if they can't somehow get a handle on the complexities of these issues and the nuances and the layers, rather than criminalize it, move on, you know, it's so much more complex. And I don't know how we take that to them with the information that we need in hand.
Fair comments. I think that it would be helpful for the legislature if parties of interest could work with certain legislators, and I think even the chair of the House Committee is willing to have this discussion, because he talks about kind of the range of homelessness and why people are where they're at, some with mental illness, some are just, you know, bad luck. They, you know, lost their job, lost their house and so forth, but they want to get back to work, they want to, you know, move forward. And so putting some kind of a definition on funding and what that funding can be used for. So specifically, how is that funding going to help someone who is homelessness get back to being a productive member of society, whether that's mental health services, whether that's drug treatment, or whether that's job services? I think the legislature would be much more receptive to those kinds of programs, other than, quite frankly, what we saw this year was $50 million grant program allocated out to communities with, one city in particular, hoping they got 60, 70% of that, and no plan what they're going to do with it. And more than likely, it'd be, we're going to pay for housing. And so that created skepticism in the legislature, and they said, we're not willing to do that. We want to see more definition.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Whitney. I appreciate your explanation and your work.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. I would say before the interim city manager leaves, I very much enjoyed working with him and also Amanda, and glad to see her back behind the desk, so to speak, as opposed to AWOL during such a long period of time. We texted throughout the process, which she should have been paying attention to other things, but nonetheless, very much appreciate both of them. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. If the clerk will read.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz granting fellowship high crests in exception to the provisions of the City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at Seek concerning noise prohibitions. B are minutes of the regular meeting from June 4th, 2024, and there are no applications this evening.
You've heard the consent agenda. I needed a motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve, my Councilman Miller. Second, my Councilman Banks. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Keller.
Yes.
And Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been carried. We'll move to action item number five on the agenda. If you'll please read, Tanya.
Public hearing for the purpose of considering written or oral objections to the proposed assessments on file in the office of the clerk on all lots, parcels, and pieces of ground liable for the cost of improvement, same being sanitary sewer improvement project number 401098 at 66 Northeast Highway 24, authorized by Resolution of Advisability and Authorization Number 9303, adopted and approved on April 19th, 2022. An ordinance introduced by acting city manager, Richard Neinstedt, apportioning and levying a special assessment on certain lots and pieces of ground in the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, in the area of 660 Northeast Highway 24 for sanitary sewer improvement project number 401098, and defined and described in Resolution Number 9303, adopted and approved on April 19th, 2022.
Mr. City Manager. Mayor and governing body, Ben Harder, acting finance manager, who is also appearing by Zoom, will lead you through this discussion.
Thank you, thank you, Richard. This benefit district is, is 660 Highway 24. It was created a number of years ago. The construction is finished. There is no city participation in the assessment at all. Final cost of this project was $150,000. $50,000 per lot will be spread, that cost will be spread out over 20 years. 100% paid for by the district or by the, by the petitioners and the district itself. So Mayor, that, that, this public hearing and the ordinance that's considered afterwards would be necessary for levying the, the special assessments and financing, the finally, final financing for the, the project itself.
Thank you, Ben. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the matter? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to the matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Now I ask the governing body if there is anyone who wishes to make a comment. And if not, I am open for a, a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller. Second by Councilman Kell. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes.
10 yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Motion's been carried. We'll move now to action item 5B. Madam Clerk.
A public hearing for the purpose of considering written or oral objections to the proposed assessments on file in the office of the clerk on all lots, parcels, and pieces of ground liable for the cost of improvement, same being street improvement project number 601132 for Sherwood Park Subdivision 9, authorized by Resolution of Advisability and Authorization 9279, adopted and approved on December 14th, 2021, as amended by Resolution Number 9330 and 9539. An ordinance introduced by acting city manager, Richard Neinstedt, apportioning and levying a special assessment on certain lots and pieces of ground in the city of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas, in the area of Sherwood Park Subdivision Number 9 for Street Improvement Project Number 9601132, as defined and described in Resolution Number 9279, adopted and approved on December 14th, 2021, as amended by Resolution Number 9330 and 9539.
Mr. City Manager. Mr. Hart, who is the acting finance director and appearing via Zoom, will also lead you through this.
Thank you, Richard. Sherwood Park Subdivision Number 9 was the petition was approved a number of years ago. The cost has come in final at $1,028,889. That will be spread over 18 lots on a per-unit basis over a 20-year period, as requested by the applicant, the petition applicant. 100% of this is paid for by the district and city has no participation within this district whatsoever. The public hearing and the ordinance considered afterwards will be necessary for final financing for this project.
Thank you, Ben. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone present who would like to speak to this matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. City Manager, any governing body comments we want to entertain? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance? Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Cale?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
10 yes, motion carries.
Motion's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to action item C. If the clerk will read.
C is a resolution introduced by Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 281250 Phase 2 and 281300 Phase 2 and 281301 Phase 2 for water line improvements in Westboro Southwest Lakeside Drive, Southwest Westover Road, and Southwest 15th Street.
City Manager. Mayor and governing body. Sylvia Davis will lead you through this discussion. Director?
Good evening. We are seeking approval for a capital improvement project that will replace all of the water lines in the Westboro subdivision. This is approximately 22,000 linear feet of water line for the residential area and approximately 289 new water services.
Are there any questions for the director? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move of approval.
Move of approval by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Banks. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Cale?
Yes.
10 yes, motion carries.
Motion's been carried. Thank you. We'll move to action item D. Madam Clerk.
D is a charter ordinance introduced by councilmember Neil Dobler regarding powers of appointment and removal, amending Section 19 and Section 21 of Charter Ordinance Number 94, codified at A252 through 54 to the Topeka Municipal Code.
City Manager. I would refer this to Madam Stanley, City Attorney.
I would simply say this is a charter ordinance. It does change how the city attorney is appointed and removed. And if Councilman Dobler, who introduced it, has any comment, I would happily turn it over to him.
Mayor, I think we discussed this at length last week. So with that, unless there's any questions, I would move for approval.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Kell. If you'll call the roll, please. Do you have a question, Councilman Miller?
I have a comment.
Okay.
And I want to thank Amanda. I've spent some time back and forth with her. What troubled me as I read it, I, I understand the concept and having the council involved, but I'm thinking that whatever we're doing upfront should be the same that we would do on the end. In particular, it struck me that the requirement to have us sit down and have a conversation, a meaningful, what is it called, meaningful opportunity to provide input at the hiring time is fine. That allows that conversation to occur, any concerns anybody has, whatever. But the requirement to vote, it, it, this correspondingly requires the approval of the governing body if a city attorney is to be terminated. The concern that I had was that means a public vote about a personnel issue that we were not involved with initiating. I'm also tried to think it through in terms of what the circumstances might be if, in fact, let's say the, the city attorney had, had challenged something about the city manager and they just didn't like him or whatever. The meaningful conversation would allow us to, if, if they were polarized, allow us to talk that through, but not put us in the position of, of doing the city manager's vote. I'm concerned, in fact, that if, let's assume that the, in this division, this, this case, that the city attorney had done something they felt ethically was important and there was a disagreement because something bad was going on somewhere. If, if, let's say it turned out that we supported it, or even if we didn't, it ends up that that becomes very public, that, that relationship and whatever happened is more than front-page news. And I, I don't want to cause any further harm to the individual involved by having to have their personnel issue come up for a public vote. So I began, I tried to think it through and I thought, you know, would, would the requirement that this one provides for the hiring time, that if there was a consideration on the part of the city manager for whatever reason, maybe the city manager's been acting up, maybe there's a problem with the city attorney, you don't know, but if the requirement was simply the same, that they needed to provide the governing body a meaningful opportunity to provide input, that would make sure that we all were involved, there was a conversation, it would have been an executive session, I would imagine, to vet whatever those issues were and have a decision made, but not have it be a vote. We talked about it a little bit. It's been, it's hard to, to look at that, you know, to look at the different options, but my sense is that we should match them and not, not force a public vote for the, for a termination consideration. Other people had some thoughts about it. I penciled just a substitution using exactly the same language that had been in the line before, that would substitute instead of, unless approved by the governing body or a removal, it would say additionally, the city manager cannot remove the city attorney unless the city manager has provided the governing body meaningful opportunity to provide input on the proposed removal. I'd like to propose that as, as an amendment.
Councilman Dobler?
Duncan.
Oh, Duncan, I'm sorry.
I guess my, I don't see how that's any different than now. So even under that, so under the current scenario, we have an executive session, city manager says, man, I'm just tired of this attorney, she's got to go. And we say, no, we really like her, do, do not fire her. And he says, okay, I've heard your input, I'm firing her because under the charter, I get to do that and deal with it. Now, he has to deal with the ramifications of that decision with us.
Correct.
I don't see your scenario changing that. We, we, we come into executive session, he says, this lady's got to go again. We say, well, let's give you some meaningful input. And he says, appreciate it. And then he walks out of the room and fires her. We're, to me, we're right back, what we're trying to avoid is having to take that affirmative action collectively as a group to say, the situation has to change and we have some oversight and authority into it. That's my only concern with changing that language is that I'm not sure it really moves us any farther to what we're, we were trying to accomplish.
If I can respond?
Please.
You know, the, the concern that I had is obviously something's quite wrong in a situation. If the power that we have and the, the kind of the gauntlet that's thrown down is if, if, if it's clear to you that we're not comfortable with this and you go ahead and do it, you're probably going to get fired. I mean, that, that's the power that we have by our charter now. And if, if it really is a situation that's gotten that far out of hand and the, and the individual is the problem. If, on the other hand, let's say the, let's say there was a city attorney that had, you know, done favors for half the council and didn't work with anybody else and the council was pretty unhappy with that, that would allow that issue to be vetted as well before action was taken. So, I don't know.
Councilman Dobler, Deputy Mayor. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm kind of confused with what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. So is it that you don't want this, Councilwoman Hillary, help me understand, that vote so it'll be public and then it'll be in the media? And this could be different than what you're saying versus we go into executive session and then say the firing would still occur no matter what we said in executive session, but wouldn't it be all over the newspaper anyway? I mean, I, I guess I'm not understanding if the city attorney, and I guess this is a question for city attorney, is this, this is all legal and sealed and okay? And is it going to put us in a particular situation to where we're setting a precedent that is not a healthy precedent to set? Because we're being so specific about the city attorney position and not every other position and, you know?
This is a very narrowly drafted ordinance. It only applies to the city attorney. I think when you are a city attorney, you take the job knowing the risk and benefits and one of the risks might be you get publicly fired if you choose to go that route and not resign before that happens, I guess, if you think that's coming. Other parts of our country do it all kinds of ways. There are city attorneys that are hired and fired strictly by governing bodies. There's an elected city attorney in Portland, I think. There's all kinds of versions of it. This tries to strike the balance and it's truly just a policy choice for you as a governing body on which direction you want to go.
And I think to me what makes sense out of this, unless I'm misunderstanding it, I don't think I am, I think is that it, it shows that what we're trying to do as a governing body from the way that we've tightened up the contract, right, with our next city manager, no matter who it would have been, we would have tightened up that contract. Lessons learned, right? Looking at this, we know that there's reasoning behind why we're doing what you're doing and why you posed this to us, what you're doing. So the tightening up to keep this ship aright with what we've been through in the past couple of years, it makes sense to me. I think, I kind of understand where you're coming from, but not totally. And I, and so I think that I'm, I am in support of, of the way that it stands because I, I think that as long as we know our city attorney has been thoughtful and reviewed everything and her staff, we know that Councilman Dobler has, we know that other people have put their inputs last week. So I'm supportive of it to stand the way it is. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a, to, to understand this of what the intention is, can you please, Councilman, Councilman Dobler, give me a elevator speech of why we're doing this at all so that I and the general public can understand that? Because I unfortunately was not here for that part of the meeting last week.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to do that. It'll be more than an elevator speech. It's all right. So the, the city attorney serves a unique role in city government. She, in this case, represents not only the city manager, but the city council in a legal capacity. And yet, as the way, the way things stand now, she serves at the pleasure of the city manager. And that puts any city attorney potentially in a risky position. This, this is not really about, I mean, Councilman or Councilwoman Hillary went through a bunch of scenarios, there, there's all kinds of whatevs. I mean, what if the sun doesn't come up tomorrow? I don't know. This is really not about the city manager or the city council. This is about giving a little bit of security to a position that is in a tenuous position to the city attorney who's in a tenuous position almost every day. And with some assurance that if the attorney speaks up about the city manager because they see something speaks up about the city manager because they see something going awry, that they have the ability to do that without losing their job immediately. And that's simply all it is. And this is really a compromised position. I said this last week, I started out with the thought that the city council would be involved in the hiring as well. Interim City Manager Ninestead, speaking on behalf of city managers everywhere, I suppose, said, you know, maybe that sends the wrong message, particularly to our incoming city manager, and I think he was right. So this gives him the ability to hire the city attorney. He has to talk to us, and, you know, the language is pretty obtuse there, but I think a good city manager is going to talk to the city council anyways about that, that kind of important position. So he has sole responsibility, at the end of the day, for hiring the city attorney, but not terminating the city attorney, and that's all it's done. Thank you.
Councilman Kell.
Yeah, I kind of get the point of kind of what Councilwoman Dobler was saying, it's kind of like gives them that ability to, if the city manager is doing something wrong and just keeps on going that way, gives the city attorney the opportunity to come to us and say, hey, and not have to worry about their job. Another way I kind of look at this is, that's kind of brought up of, well, city manager comes to us, we have a talk, say, no fire, they still fire. Kind of, we're looking at a litigation person that sits there, if they were fired for a wrong way, we could end up having to fire our city manager, which we're going to have to pay for, out the door, and also possibly pay for a lawsuit if they're fired for doing their job, in essence, so for the city manager, or for the city attorney side of things. So, you know, I kind of look at this as we're kind of covering our backside on that, so we're not making two payouts for a lawsuit and for the severance package for the city manager, so we're not following our instructions.
Any further comment? I would be in support of this as it's stated. I think Councilman Dobler made it pretty clear and simple. It's not a fact of all the different scenarios that might present itself, it's just that the city attorney represents the city of Topeka, not any one individual here, and not any city manager individual. She protects the city of Topeka and gives us that advice. She or he has to be in that position that they feel that that advice can be unencumbered by any possibility that they might go awry of a city manager and lose their position and lose their job. So I think it's a good faith effort to make sure that we are, our office is objective and clear and unfettered from any kind of encumbrances that might come into play with regards to vetting what we do as a governing body. So I'm supportive of the issue as it's been presented. If there's no further comment, any further comment? Is there a motion to approve?
You have it.
Did we do, oh, that's right, you didn't ask for comment. Okay. Motion in a second. All right, if you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Fadilla?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Waldivi Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ten yes, motion carries.
Motion is carried, thank you for the discussion. Move on to now Action Item D. If you read, Dunya.
E is an ordinance introduced by Councilmember Neil Dobler concerning appointment of the city attorney, amending section 2, 20070 of the Topeka Municipal Code and repealing original section.
Okay. City manager?
Amanda Stanley, city attorney, will present this ordinance to you.
We have a lot of ordinary ordinances in our code that match charter ordinances, and this is just the companion ordinance. The only difference is the mayor does not get to vote.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
We have approval.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Dobler.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Waldivi Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Dobler?
Yes.
Nine yes, motion carries.
Motion is carried, we'll move now to Action Item F. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance introduced by Councilmember Neil Dobler concerning parking of vehicles on residential property, amending section 1060120 of the Topeka Municipal Code and repealing original section.
City manager?
This is an ordinance dealing with parking on residential areas that we have, parking on your front yard, your backyard. Oh, can I?
Microphone on, nobody's here yelling "mic". So this is an ordinance introduced by Councilwoman Dobler in response to concerns about how long you could park in your front yard on grass if you do not have gravel as required by our code, or in your backyard. Last week, there were lots of questions, we did send out an FAQ that is in the Agenda Packet Online that tried to answer all of those, so we're happy to answer those. Also, John Chardine is here in person to talk, if you have any questions about the practicality of this ordinance, and I am happy to stand for any questions.
Hello, John. Councilwoman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. So last week, I expressed a desire to reduce the six months down to three months, and I asked staff to, we wrote up an amendment. I talked with staff to make sure that the concerns we heard last week about individuals who have issues actually parking in their space, if they have one vehicle because of short alleys and backyards, and kind of the feedback I got was, those are few and far between, and we can work with those individuals, and we'll do so, but what we are seeing is for every one of those, there are then a, you know, six, seven, eight, who are absolutely abusing it by parking multiple vehicles in backyards, letting other people park in their backyard, and that six months just makes it very difficult. When then we get calls in from neighbors saying, why are you letting these people park all these cars in their backyard? You know, it's creating issues in those alleys and backyards. And so I just thought, I said it last week, so I would like to at least make the motion to reduce the six-month time period to three months and see how that floats with the body. So I'd like to move that.
Okay.
I don't know if I have a second.
So we have a motion? And a second by?
No. Make a statement.
Okay.
Can we, friendly amendment to your amendment there, make it a three month, but we start with a three-month grace period for people to, a lot of people, like we were discussing earlier, last week, low income, things like that, to be able to try to get their vehicles moved and all that kind of stuff?
I don't know that we need that, and maybe John wants to address, I don't know if you heard the discussion last week, when we talked about, if you could just talk about why that six months might be long, but the concern last week from both councilmembers Banks and Ortiz were that every once in a while, there is an individual who, and you know this as well as we, we have some neighborhoods where it's very small alleys, there's really nowhere to, if you don't park in your backyard to some degree, you're blocking the alley, there's nowhere else to park. And so what we don't want is to harm those people by giving them tickets, we'd like to get them in compliance versus the folks I'm talking about that are clearly just the violation. So what is our process? If you could walk through that to help those folks.
Just a second. Let him respond.
Well, he's kind of going off work, not where I was going with it.
But just let him respond.
So our inspectors use discretion when they do the inspection, they inspect the property from front to back, top to bottom, completely, first time. And one of those violations may be the vehicles that you're mentioning. Maybe they have vehicles parked in the backyard for whatever reason. So we're initially looking at them from the International Property Maintenance Code side, we're going to make sure they're properly registered and operational. If they're parked back there, because they're not, they don't want to park them in front, they have another issue. So this issue would be approved surfaces, and that's what we're really looking for, is that vehicle parked on an approved surface? Six months? That's a long time. And in six months, everything grows over that vehicle, it still harbors infestation of rats, mice, all the other things that come with storing stuff in a backyard. Can we use discretion? Can we knock on a door? Yes, we can, and we often do. We start with education, behavior modification, problem solving, and then finally, we move to the punitive damages. So, yeah, we do that.
Well, I was, kind of more what I was thinking was, you know, over a few decades, people accumulate three or four cars, they're non-running in their backyard. I'm just saying, during that three-month grace period, we can give them warnings, say, hey, on this date, you know, you're going to, you know, start getting fined or whatever. This allows them to now get, you know, we've done this with other cleanup ordinances, where we're giving them a little grace period. So I'm just saying, let's let it be a grace period so that now these people can get together, get the financials together that they might need to get together, to get, because towing a vehicle out is going to cost $500,000. If you have four vehicles out there, some places towing is very expensive. $500,000. $500,000.
So what I'll say, though, is I understood where you're going with it, that's why I wanted the, just the quick explanation. Six months is written in the ordinance, is the grace period. All I'm asking is that we're reducing that grace period from six months to three months. So giving a three-month grace period on top of the three months is essentially recreating six months.
As the first three months of this ordinance, is this three months and then it kicks into effect, in essence.
This ordinance, no, because this ordinance already exists, that was the conversation we had last week, this ordinance is the law. Today, this ordinance is the law.
But we haven't enforced it.
Correct. But we're not going to backtrack, we're not going to backtrack an ordinance that already is in effect today by three months and essentially invalidate it for three months for the entire city, because that's what it would do. That three-month grace period would invalidate this ordinance for three months for the whole city, and that would be chaos for our staff. So the short version is, I don't have a second and I may not get one, and that's fine, but I would not accept that as a friendly.
I've said, we've done this with other cleanup ordinances, where we're giving them a grace period before it goes into effect, where warnings and education can be done at that timeframe.
I hear you. I would not accept that as a friendly.
But I'm not talking about three months, every single month, I'm talking about...
Councilman, he's not accepting that, okay? So to continue to go make your argument, it just favors the point right now. I want to ask John, I said, and I think you made the point, anytime that we're looking at, three months, six months, whatever, it's not like you're sitting and waiting and hiding, waiting for that date to come, you're doing a lot of education and contact and doing whatever you can to move it forward, so that's a grace period until you finally reach that deadline. So adding a grace period on top of a grace period, I don't see, makes it any sense, makes it sense at all.
You're correct. During that whole time of identifying the violation, we're making contact with the occupant or property owner, we're giving them resources, we're educating them, and we're problem-solving for them. There's really nothing else we can do. So if they're keeping the vehicle for a reason, let's find out what it is, see what the core problem is. If it's not tagged, let's work on getting it tagged, get it operational, and start using the vehicle.
Yeah, Councilman Kell.
I think I'm not being understood, I'm just saying for that first, when this goes in, let's say we go into effect tomorrow, the first three months of tomorrow, we're not going to enforce this, just like we've done with the cleanup ordinance. Once this goes into effect, we have that time period where it's, hey, issue in the morning, I'm not saying give them three months, give them three grace period months, I'm saying for the first three months of this, once it goes into effect, there's that three month grace period, so it gives us the whole six months, but after that, it is three months, that's it, not a continual three-month grace periods. I'm talking about to start it off, to give people in the low-income neighborhoods a chance to be able to get this thing taken care of, because we're just tossing a huge bill on some people right off the bat that have those broken-down, non-running vehicles in their backyard, that might have three or four in their backyard, and now we're throwing this huge bill on them in three months possibly. I'm just saying, to start it from the beginning of it, we're going to, it's more of an education time, we're not really enforcing it, and after that initial three months is when it's enforceable on the books kind of thing, and it's not a continual grace period situation.
Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having to represent a moderate to low-income district, I think the three-month grace period is effective. If we have extra grace time, those cars aren't working anyway. Most of the time, these people are not going to just miraculously go and make a car serviceable, usable. So I think the three months is certainly representative of what this body represents as a grace period. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hofer and then Councilman Dobler.
I want to second the amendment.
Okay. Okay. Now, Madam Clerk, if you will read the amendment, please. Or city attorney.
Passed out is the ordinance, the amendment is on page two, line 36, it simply changes six to three. It probably should have been printed in red, I'll make a note for the future to make this easier.
So the amendment is to change it from six months to three months?
On page two, line 36, it changes the six to three.
City manager?
John, I'm just curious, if you roll up, no pun intended, on the driveway, and you have a car, how do you, how far is moving it in three months? You come back three months later, what, is there a standard?
What would resolve the issue? Answer the ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, can they just do like one tire?
No, I think the vehicle has to be removed, is that not correct?
This is about gravel. Do they have to place gravel?
We have a motion in a second, but Councilman Kell, I'll reconvene.
I just noticed on here that it changed from real property to any vehicle or machinery. Machinery is a very vague term that can be, you can call a lawnmower machinery. I mean, I think we kind of, I'm not saying remove it because then you could pile up your machinery back there, but it's, I'm not sure how we can better word that, where...
Councilman Kell, vehicle or machinery is defined in our city ordinance and the original ordinance, not the amendment, I'm trying to find where it is, and the amendment, it's at the top of page two and four, vehicle or machinery shall mean a machine propelled by power other than human power that is designed to travel along the ground by use of wheels, treads, runners, slides, or transportation person or property. Vehicle or machinery shall include, without limitation, automobiles, trucks, trailers, recreational vehicles, motorbikes, boats, campers, or tractors, and that is all current law, and that change was in the change last week that was presented to you as well.
Okay. So I didn't see that last week, but I just want to know. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yeah. Councilman Hiller.
I think I can ask you a question that can perhaps help resolve your concerns about this. Realistically, what you're talking about doing is inspecting and writing up this ordinance the same way you do the Property Maintenance Code, correct?
Simultaneously, yes.
In that, you're going to, in this case, when you roll up, if somebody's complained or your inspector discovers that there is a vehicle parked in the backyard and it's not on a paved surface, they don't know how long it's been there anyway, maybe somebody told them, but might have been there for a period of time. And what you all are going to do is roll in there and not really, my guess is, quibble about that too much, but instead, give them 30 days or whatever you do under code to get it out of there, right?
That's correct.
And then work with them if they need an extension, just like you do on the property maintenance complaints.
That's correct.
Right? So I think it's going to solve what you're worried about, just because of the standard operating procedures that they use on write-ups for code.
But as of right now, that's the standard operating procedure. You get a different person in charge of it, and they start cracking.
I was trying to help.
Okay. We have the amendment, and I'm going to ask for it to be reread to make sure it's clear that what we're voting on will change yes or no.
Correct. What you're voting on is an amendment in line 36 on page two, which changes six to three months.
Okay. We have it, and we have a motion in a second. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hofer?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Waldivi Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Motion carries.
Motion's carried.
I move, move to approve the underlying.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
And I'll second.
I believe that maybe Councilwoman Hiller has another amendment.
Oh, sorry. Then I, then I pull back that motion.
There you go. I was kind of watching for your stack there.
I was like, here's your stack.
Let these get around. I have another very simple one, and that is that, until they get around. Mine's not in red either, but it's on-
Page, it's on page two, line 34 and 35. The amendment, as I believe is going to be introduced, would change owner of any real property to any person to park or allowed to be parked of any such vehicle or machinery.
And I visited with Manda about that. What, what I did, I've been involved even long before I was on council with these issues about parking in yards. We actually have about five different ordinances between the Property Maintenance Code and the TMC that cover this. And the term, "it shall be unlawful for any person to park or allowed to be parked," was actually in this ordinance when it was, as recently as 2019. And is the, is the phrasing that's used in some of the companion ordinances about abandoned vehicles and ticketing them and pulling them off. What it does is, instead of tying the responsibility for that vehicle in that backyard only to the person who owns it, or only to the property owner whose yard it's on, it allows the flexibility, depending on whether you can find out ownership and what the story is and all that, to simply ticket the appropriate party in the situation. Again, that matches some of the other, this is exactly the language that some of our other parking-related ordinances have. So it would just be to have this one say, "it shall be unlawful," as City Attorney said, "shall be unlawful for any person to park or allowed to be parked," any of that vehicle. Yes.
Councilman Kell.
Does not allow them, let's say, as a rental property, the renty and the landlord and the renter to point finger at each other?
That's what happens. You know, what John does with the Property Maintenance Code is that they write up the owner on any of those things, and then let the owner sift it out. If it's the tenant's car, or they don't know where it was, you know, know whose it is or whatever. There are times, there was, there are problems finding ownership. So limiting it to ownership, you know, if whoever owns that property has allowed those cars to accumulate on their backyard, they can be responsible for it. That's how, that's how we do it in the code for dumping, for trash, all those things the owner gets written up for. It just allows us to, to get it resolved with a responsible party.
So, what?
Councilman Miller.
I apologize. I shouldn't have. Thank you, Mayor. So what you're saying is currently, you want it, we have it matching, you want it to match what we have currently, which is we can go after anybody who's on the property and not the owner? Are you wanting it to be on the owner only? Now, I understand it says any person.
It'd be the owner of the car or the owner of the property. They can take the situation and decide how to best proceed.
Okay. And is John and their group good with this?
I think I can explain from a prosecution standpoint what this does. Is it opens it up to two different offenses. It basically creates two different offenses. Creates an offense if you are the person that parked there, and you didn't have the right to park there, you parked there, or you did have the right to park there. It doesn't matter if they said you parked there or not. So you could be ticketed for that. It also creates a second offense, which was the original offense that we were not prosecuting because it's very hard to prove, but there might be a case where you could prove it, where it also brings back in the owner of the real property. So in the case, like, if you could show that the owner of the real property said, yeah, just park your cars in my backyard, I'm allowing you to. So you potentially have two different offenses, and you could cite them both, potentially. So it widens it and creates two offenses. The offenses we originally had as well as an offense against just the owner of the vehicle.
What she said.
I have a question. Why would this also not mirror the three months rather than the six months?
Because I didn't know if Councilman Dobler or Duncan's amendment would be passed first or second. So if you pass this, it layers on top of each other, and the ultimate ordinance would have both of them.
Okay. All right. Further questions? Deputy Mayor.
Just want to find out, coming from you, how do you feel about the change?
This is another opportunity for education. So, yeah, we can make it work. If you're, if you're letting me cite the property owner on top of it, it's his vehicle, then, yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Correct.
And just one more question, Mayor. And this mirrors, this, what this is trying to do is create consistency.
Yes.
Along the other ordinances that we have.
Now, mind you, this is just a citation. This is not removing vehicles. This is just a citation. If you want to remove vehicles, it's gotta be in violation of the International Property Maintenance Code. And that means it's unlicensed or not operational. So it's totally different.
Okay. So thank you for that. And I'm just saying, Mayor, that with working on the change in our culture of property maintenance, all of the meetings that we're having to try to move forward, if this is providing consistency with other ordinances, you know, this is the first I've seen of this, but I think it makes sense, and I would support this. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler.
Is there a second yet on this?
I don't believe so.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, motion, Councilwoman Hiller.
Just, just to share, and the ordinance about parking for more than 48 hours, which the police department's used forever, says, "it shall be unlawful for any person to park or permit the parking, storing, or standing of any vehicle, blah, blah, blah." The ordinance that we've been working on, another one, prohibitions about abandoning vehicles, it just matches.
That's a wonderful bottom line.
Okay. Okay. So, where are we right now?
You have a motion and a second on the Hiller amendment.
Get all that back and forth. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Nine yes. Motion carries.
Banks, you have amended it?
No.
Councilman Dobler.
So now we need a motion to approve the multiply amended ordinance. If so, I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dobler, second by Deputy Mayor. To call the roll, please.
Councilmember Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
And Hiller?
Yes.
Nine yes. Motion carries.
Move on now to action item 5G. Madam Clerk.
G is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstedt determining the city of Topeka's intent to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures in connection with the operation of Hotel Topeka.
City Manager.
Mayor and governing body, Braxton Copley, Public Works Director, and manager extraordinaire of Hotel Topeka.
Oh, careful. Yeah, we gotta get that replaced.
Ben, I've got Ben Hart remotely who can help explain this. I will try to put this into the simplest terms. This ordinance will give you the ability, but does not require you, to bond capital improvements to the hotel. Right now, we have, for, the only one that would fall into this would be the $217,000 for the chiller. That has been designated as unassigned reserves. If down the road, it's in the city's best financial interest, as recommended by the Finance Director, to bond those instead of using cash, you would be able to bond them and pay back those reserves. That is it in a nutshell, in terms of what this does. It gives you an opportunity down the road to bond, to pay yourself back, to cover some of those costs that you currently have approved by cash.
Okay, thank you, Braxton. Any questions for the director? Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. If we did choose to bond down the road, that would be an item that would come back in front of the council. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions? Is there a motion?
Our motion.
Motion to approve by Councilman Neller, second by Councilman Cale. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Ortiz?
No.
Banks?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
No.
Okay, we have eight yes with two no, with that no being Valdivia Akala and Councilmember Ortiz. Motion carries.
Motion's carried. Thank you. Move on to now, on the agenda, non-action items. Madam Clerk.
A is a review of the City Forum of Government and Citizen Government Review Committee pursuant to Topeka Municipal Code, Chapter 2, 210.
Mr. City Manager.
Sorry. Mayor and governing body, this will be reviewed with you by the City Attorney.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. I'll let them pull up my presentation, and I'll just get started. Councilman Dobler asked a couple weeks ago for a review of our city's form of government, as well as what our Citizen Review Commission does when it begins next year. So this is an exciting time to educate our public about our form of government and make sure everyone has education. I love local government, so this is one of my favorite things to do, is talk about this. And my second favorite thing is to teach about home rule, so maybe we can have a home rule class at some point. But we will kick off with talking about, just briefly, to set the stage for those of you that don't live and breathe local government, which is not all of you guys. But we do have three classes of cities in Kansas. Cities of the first class, second class, and third class in Kansas. Topeka was incorporated. Am I supposed to be moving slides, Dan? Okay, you got it. Perfect. Thank you. I like it when other people take care of those things. Topeka was incorporated in 1857 by the Legislative Assembly of the Territorial Government. So we have been around for a very long time. The Kansas Constitution actually adopted and ratified in 1859 and established Topeka as the temporary capital of our state. And you can flip to the next slide, Dan. That's what we're on. Kansas was recognized as a state in 1861, with Topeka being appointed as the official capital. I think that quite matches what I have in front of me. So we'll just, we'll just wing it. That is a different presentation. I'm not sure how you got that. Let's stop, let's stop showing that one. We'll just do it by, we'll just, you can look in your agenda packet online later when you get home. So we are a unique form of government. We are created by charter. We have a council-manager form of government. And so we like to do things our own way in Topeka, so we created our own form of government. Our mayor is considered a member of the governing body for purposes of voting on anything but a home rule ordinance, to which the mayor has a veto. I get asked all the time what a home rule ordinance is, and that's anything that state law doesn't prescribe that we do. So when we're just creating our own laws, because we have that really cool power at cities in Kansas, the mayor does not get to vote, but he gets to veto things. So he gets a special veto pen. I don't know if you actually have one of those. But the governing body shall then consist of a 10-member body consisting of nine district council members and one mayor. The nine district members, all of you, are nominated and elected from our nine districts of near equal population on a nonpartisan basis. So each council district is represented by one district council member. We do redistrict after censuses, which you guys went through last year, that exercise of making sure that our districts are equal in population base. And then our mayor is nominated and elected at large on a nonpartisan basis. Our charter does specifically call for a nonpartisan basis. That's why bills like what Whitney were talking about are so dangerous for our city, because those bills, if someone declares a party, creates a partisan race. And the bills would actually invalidate our entire charter and our form of government, which would be problematic if overnight we did not have a charter. So our mayor is our chief elected officer of the city, and he has a lot of responsibilities in the code. He is responsible for providing leadership and taking issues to the people. He's supposed to marshal public interest in and support for municipal activities, which is strong language about, talking about engaging the, or the civic duties of government and making sure people understand what their government does for them. But not only that, he gets to recommend measures and legislation that he deems necessary, considering the affairs of the city. You get to encourage programs for the physical, economic, social, and cultural development of the city, and actively promote the economic development to broaden and strengthen the commercial and employment base of the city. So those are pretty important job duties for any city to focus on economic development and encourage our economic and social and cultural development. Not only that, he gets to be the ceremonial head of the city, represent the city in intergovernmental relations. So he gets to go over to the county and the Capitol and make sure all levels of government talk to each other, provide community leadership, chair governing body meetings. He does not have any administrative power, and he does get the right to vote. So the council has specific powers in our charter ordinance as well. The council and the mayor are the governing body of the city. So as a group, you are the corporate body of our municipal corporation. We're considered a municipal corporation under state law. And you get to exercise the duties of legislation. You get to write things to your ultimate power. The one thing you must do every year is pass a budget. So you have to pass a budget. You are the appropriators of funds, as well as the policymakers. There is no administrative duties or powers for the governing, or for the council in our code. And then the third part of our charter is our city manager. Our city manager serves at the pleasure of the governing body. So as we discussed earlier, you hire, and you fire, and you provide direction, and you, he is your employee. And so, or she, whoever you have at any given moment, a city manager. They are responsible to the council for the proper and efficient administration of the city. So I always think about it kind of like the legislature and the governor, right? You know, legislature writes laws, governor's supposed to go enforce them. On the local level, the governing body writes the laws and provides the policy, and the city manager is that CEO that goes and executes all of those things. All department heads are responsible to him. All employees are. So we have, you know, over 1,000 employees that the city manager is responsible for. And then he delegates those powers down through department heads. He's also responsible for recommending organizations of departments, making sure that the city is in its best place possible. He's also supposed to execute and enforce all laws and ordinances and policies that the council passes. You wouldn't want to pass ordinances that the city manager wasn't enforcing. So they are responsible for that. They sign all of our contracts binding the city. So unless it's a specific thing that you have passed legislation on, like professional services more than 50,000, those kind of things that need additional authority, he is signing all the contracts on behalf of the city. Attends all your council meetings, so hope Dr. Perez is ready for all his Tuesday nights. And so unless you excuse him for something else, he gets to attend all of our meetings. he gets to attend all of our meetings. And then he is supposed to recommend things to you that he thinks you need to know about. So if there's an ordinance that we need, that's why you see ordinances as introduced by city manager, because there are some times that staff recommends ordinances that you just don't know about until you need to know, or until you get to know about it, because it's here and it's in front of you. So, he also has to investigate all the affairs of the city under his supervision. So if there's allegations contracts aren't being enforced or franchises aren't being enforced, he specifically in our charter is supposed to investigate those, as well as control the financial affairs of the city, prepare an annual budget, make sure that our contractors are following the rules. We wrote lots of very specific powers into our charter the last time it was written. A, he also supervises the purchasing of materials and supplies, makes a recommendation on public contracts, keeps the council at all times fully advised as to the financial condition and needs of the city. And then there's certain rules and regs and what dates he has to provide different reports. For example, February 28th, you have to have a written report of the financial conditions of the city. So, that sets up what our structure is. We have our mayor, we have our council, which make up your governing body, and you have your city manager, policy, administration, execution. And then we are unique in our state as well, and we are the only city that has a Citizen Government Review Committee. There are lots of counties that have charter review committees every 10 years or so. Topeka is the only one that has a Citizen Government Review Committee, which is why we are talking about this now, because it is time for our Government Review Committee. And in the presentation, which is posted online, so you can look at it, there is a history of how this came to be, because I think it's kind of fascinating how we have it, what is our current format as well. But, our current Citizen Government Review Committee is set out in our Topeka Municipal Code. The committee will be comprised of five registered voters, appointed by the governing body, representing as widely diverse backgrounds as possible. So as a governing body, you'll be responsible for appointing five people. It must convene by July 1st, 2025. It will submit a report and recommendations to the governing body within six months. Their meetings must be open to the public, and the committee report must include, but not be limited to, areas of concern, addressed, general findings, and specific recommendations for alleviating concerns or problems. So we have had a Citizen Review Committee in the city of Topeka since 1983. That was our first one. Over time, they have really changed how we do them. And now, it is very broad. You will actually have to start talking about this in October, about how you want it to look, because you will set up what the parameters are of the five people, what you want them to look at, what they can look at, how many meetings they have to have. All of that's established by resolution by the governing body. So the governing body has a huge say in how this all works. As I said, our first one was in 1983. If you care for historical knowledge, at that point, we had 16 members. We were a totally different form of government at that time, so we had four commissioners. We've changed our government quite a few times. So we had four commissioners and the mayor. They had six public hearings, so they met six times. I think it's helpful to know the history of how many times various ones of these have met as you set up your resolution. But ultimately, they recommended a new form of government, the strong mayor council, chief administrative officer, that was placed on the ballot in 1984. That passed, and we became a strong mayor form of government in April of 85. Our next Charter Ordinance Review Committee was in 1990. So they had a second one about seven years later. That time, they narrowed it down by one member, so we had 15 members. They met 13 times, so they met a whole heck of a lot more times. And their major issue at the time was that they really needed to clarify what the mayor did and what the rest of the council did, and so they spent a significant amount of time with that. The governing body, as it can continue to do, can accept or reject any of the changes. The governing body at the time adopted some of their recommendations and rejected most of them. In 1998, was the next committee to refine our form of government. That was our first televised public hearing for our form of government. The committee solicited advice from past city office holders, department heads, representatives from the business and the labor community, as well as citizen input, recommended numerous changes to the charter. They also, at that time, were urging consolidation of the city and county. They had lots of recommendations of what the county should look like. None of those recommendations were adopted by the governing body at the time. Then, outside the Citizen Review Committee, we changed our form of government in 2005. That was not done through a Citizen Review Committee. That was done at a governing body initiation. So the governing body initiated the change to the council management form of government in 2005. Because we changed our governing body form of government, it went on the ballot and it passed. That was only six years after the Citizen Review Commission. So the next one was actually held in 2009. And at that point, we changed our current version of the TMC, which says that you hold one every 10 years. So we impaneled one not before July 2015, and then every 10 years after. So we had one in 2014. That was our last Citizen Review Commission. They met between January and May of 2014, recommended their findings to the governing body in 14. And again, the major focus at that time was defining the role of mayor. Lots of technical changes were made, but no substantial changes were made to the form of government that were adopted by the governing body at that time. And the report can be provided. If anybody is interested in the full report from 2014, it is very long, so you can look at it and read it if you would like to. You'll recognize some of your own names testifying in that one, so you can look at that. So the next steps for you is that in October, the governing body will need to set out the parameters for the Citizen Review Committee via resolution. And so you'll need to discuss, how do you want to pick these five individuals who are going to review the form of government? Do you want to give them a specific number of meanings? Do you want to let them set their meanings? Do you want to allow for public comment? Do you not? Do you want to allow them to set their rules? All of that is set by you as a body in a resolution. So, I would imagine be a discussion item for a couple of weeks as you figure out what the parameters are that you want. All of these have looked very different. So, the only true requirement is that those five people are supposed to represent as diverse backgrounds as possible to truly represent the city of Topeka. And I'm happy to stand for any questions, and I apologize that somehow I sent the wrong PowerPoint. But if you want to learn about home rule, that is the PowerPoint for that.
Questions for City Attorney? Something to look forward to, right?
I will say one really cool thing. If you want to see our original resolution making us the city of the first class, it was anonymously dropped off to the City Attorney's Office when it was supposed to probably have been destroyed from the Secretary of State's office. So it is framed up there from 1888, or '81, I wrote it down. But it's all handwritten by the Secretary of State and the governor at the time, and so it's framed up there. And it is really cool to see the original seal when we became the city of the first class.
Okay. Thank you, Manna. We'll move on now to public comment. And we have one individual signed up, Vanessa Evans.
Hello. My name's Vanessa Evans. I attend Grace Episcopal Cathedral, and I am a member of Topeka Jump. I'm not from around here. I grew up in a small town near Boise, Idaho, and I grew up poor. Fortunately, in the '90s, that was one of the cheapest areas in the country. My parents worked hard, and they got us through it. However, since that time, the real estate value shot through the roof, and quite frankly, I can't afford to live there. I followed a dear friend and fellow Idahoan out here to Topeka because it was much more affordable than my hometown. That was in October 2020. I'm passionate about affordable housing because I feel like I moved here just in time to buy an affordable home. Unfortunately, that opportunity is closing for many people in my age group. I specifically requested to speak tonight because I was so excited to hear about the updates to the land bank. This is something that I've been so excited about, that I'll bring it up in conversations with strangers at the store. However, solving this affordable housing crisis will take many different solutions, and the land bank is only one of them. In the 2020 housing study, which was referenced by Quinn Cole earlier, there were five recommended major solutions and the order in which to implement them. I was reading through the Citywide Housing Market Survey and Strategy Plan this week, and was impressed by how many of their suggestions are already being implemented, including the land bank and infill strategies. Yet the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has continued to lag behind. So why are we, Topeka Jump, and other community leaders, being so impatient for the sake of this solution? After all, the city has made an amazing amount of progress despite all the unforeseen challenges and roadblocks of the last couple of years. First of all, the longer we wait, the less buying power we have. A million dollars doesn't go as far as it did in April 2023, which is when we were promised the full million dollars. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics from April 2023 to April 2024, the rate of inflation for both energy and commodities, less energy and food, was 3.6%. And the rate of inflation for shelter was 5.5%. By my estimate, this means that we have lost around $36,000 to $55,000 in buying power by delaying. Second, out of all the strategies recommended in the housing survey, they recommended that we fund and start enacting the Affordable Housing Trust Fund first. Not only that, but they suggested what to focus on and how to grow the program over time, acknowledging that it will need to start small. We have followed many of the study's other suggestions, so why not this? Why is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund sitting stagnant? Third, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Review Committee gives members of the community greater opportunity to use their expertise and experience. We, the city of Topeka, need to know who will be on the review committee and when the first meeting will be. So let's begin.
You still have time?
Oh, thank you. We need to know who will be on the review committee and when the first meeting will be, so that community organizations, such as Cornerstone and Habitat, can have time to prepare thoughtfully and strategically. We have funding, we have a game plan, and we have community support. Let's begin. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else has signed up? Public comment, okay. Move on to announcements. Madam Clerk.
For the June 18th meeting, there are three board appointments. There is a presentation for Go Cashless with KTA. There is a consent agenda item for the governing body meeting schedule. There will be two ordinances for resurs, one with the parking lot annexation, and the other is a PUD for the Master Plan Amendment. There's also an ordinance for the Sports Center annexation. There's also a contract for Bartlett and West for street improvements. And then there's two resolutions for the Unassigned Reserve Fund for Hotel Topeka for repair items. And lastly, there is a discussion for the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan.
Okay. Thank you. City Manager.
Mayor, Governing Body, I want to say again thank you to Chief Willis. Brian, in the short time that I've served with Brian, I can tell you that he is one of the top chiefs that I have worked with in 45 years. He is calm, he is thoughtful, and he is a problem solver. And he has compassion. All those things you have to have if you're going to be a public leader. So, thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. Thank you so much for your show of support tonight. Thank you so much for this gift. My wife and I thank you from the bottom of our hearts for allowing us to be a part of your family for over a year. And I'll still be here next meeting.
Thank you, Richard. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I really would like to give a couple of shout-outs, huge, to CPO, Community Police Officer Evan Fredericks. He is the Oakland Community Police Officer. Also, a huge shout-out to Major Cross, staff with the BHU and CIT unit, and staff that has made their availability to any number of community meetings that we have been having because of the continued challenge we have in Oakland. And tomorrow, we'll be having a meeting about some North Topeka issues, about law-breaking, unsheltered folks. I'm not talking about just homeless folks. I'm talking specific issues that have any number of residents in District 2, just at their wits' ends. We had a meeting last week in a garage in Oakland where we had about seven neighbors, and Major Cross made it a point to have BHU, CIT there. Officer Fredericks, which he does a lot as a CPO, and to me, he's an example of what our community police officers need to be doing, because he is doing it in the district. So, just a huge amount of thanks to that. The other thing I just wanted to let the public know, in addition to the governing body, is that as part of the Public Health and Safety Committee, and this is still a little bit down the road, but just preparing all for it, that we have taken up the public health lens approach that I had been, I've been talking about on and off for a number of weeks. That's not only utilizing the social determinants of health, but also the public lens, like information that comes from the county health department, et cetera. I'm going to be working with folks to do a presentation at our September Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, but I just wanted to say that I'm really looking forward to, for us at, on the PHS Committee, to start embracing this approach, especially as we look at continued ways to help build up Topeka, help grow Topeka. The public health approach, including the social determinants of health, are supported with rigorous methodology, scientific data, utilizing a data-driven approach, supported by the CDC and organizations like the American Health, the American Public Health Association. And what it seeks to look at is, it seeks to look at the public health across the board, but also into the underserved communities that we know that still pose a challenge in our city. Those are communities that are often LMI communities. They are a combination of all ethnicities, all races, all diversities. They are white, black, Latino, indigenous populations, et cetera. And so when we look at some of the most forward-facing cities, the public health approach has become the go-to mechanism because of its scientific basing and methodology. It also utilizes the proactive approach to deal with any number of issues in a certain way to where you're not paying all the time out for continually doing things the same way over and over that get the same results, and that same kind of languishing in certain areas of our district. And so, I think that the reason why it's so important to articulate this to the public as well is that we know Topeka is really good when it comes to DEI. We know that Topeka is really good for the number of events that it holds, Dune Teen, Fiesta Mexicana, German Fest, et cetera. We pride ourselves on pushing forth the diversity in our community. We also know that this is the place of Brown v. Board. Yet there comes a time where we have to move beyond that into methodology and methods that we know will work in the long run, that may challenge us to look at public health and cause us to be educated more and to have to learn more as a governing body. But when we're looking at the future and the challenges that we face, how can we not do that? Or are we going to continue to stay with the same things that we're doing over and over that do not work? And while we know programs like GTP's, Programs for Bringing in New Folks into Topeka, has worked. It's relevant. These are good ideas. We also hear over and over, what about the folks here? So we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can encourage folks to come in, and we can also start utilizing new methodology for dealing with the ongoing issues that we have. So I look forward to that. I look forward to what that could mean for us in any different numbers of realms. The other thing that I wanted to say and just end on, we are really excited, the Oakland Community Garden is very excited tomorrow to be hosting Craig Hydeman. He is the president and CEO of Call Valley Bank in North Topeka. They made a generous donation, but in addition to that, he has an agriculture background, and he wants to come and take a look at the garden. So we're going to be cleaning up our spaces tomorrow, making sure all of our lawn is mowed, I'm sure, and all of that. And so, we're really looking forward to having him take a look at probably one of the largest community gardens in the city. And with his agriculture education, maybe he can give us some ideas on... us some ideas on how to handle infestations as we get into the hottest part of the year, which is summer. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing but itchy eyes tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Banks.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman McHale.
I'm a huge music buff. I love music, and this is African-American Music Appreciation Month. Genres attributed to African-Americans include blues, funk, gospel, hip-hop, jazz, rap, R&B, and soul music. And it's, a class I took in college was the history of jazz. Completely hate jazz, but to see how it's affected other music throughout time and how they, how all these different genres have evolved and not just become considered African-American music, but music for everyone, is a great attribute of the history of these genres, and how some of them are new but still cross over from one genre to another. So just kind of looking at the music, looking at the history of music, it's amazing, and I know a lot of people always hear a song they think is new, but someone else did it. Like the other night, I was at a Tim McGraw concert, and he did Tiny Dancer by Elton John, and it's this, you know, look at the history of the music, because sometimes you'll hear, well, this one copied this guy. Well, the copy was actually done 20 years earlier, so just looking at these different genres and see how they've affected our history in different areas of the country and as country as a whole. Thank you.
Councilman Miller.
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dobler.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick thank you to Chief Willis for all you've done. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. Dip my toe in controversy here, lead things off just a little bit. It's always difficult when you look at situations where we make decisions for the city that don't really have county-wide impacts. There are times that the county makes a decision that doesn't necessarily impact us within the city limits, but obviously can affect us in an adjacent manner, being that we're the largest city in Shawnee County, we're also the capital city. And on Thursday, county has what I know is a decision they are struggling with, is they take up a decision as to whether to put a one-year moratorium on wind power and solar power and those larger developments. I know they're struggling with it. I've talked to individuals in the county who would like them to pass that. I watched very closely as they held their hearing last month, and there's some valid concerns, and those include land use and wildlife preservation, and noise and property value concerns, and the impact on farmland. There's some validity to those concerns, and I'm glad the commission has listened to them, and I think they can address those. From my perspective, being here in the capital city, what I hope those three commissioners have at least looked at very hard before they make a decision one way or the other is, what is the economic development impact of that decision going to be, not just on the county, but then as people want to come to this area of our state? What is the energy security impact, as Kansas has tried to be one of the leaders in some of those developments to help the whole country divest itself of foreign investment in those areas? And what is the long-term impact it's going to have on utility infrastructure development in our entire county? I don't have all those answers, and I'm not sure they do, and I know that's one reason they're looking at the moratorium. I'm more disturbed, as you will, by the idea of putting it into solar than I am to wind for the short term. So all I'm saying to the county today is, I know it's a tough decision, I know you've got a lot of voices in your head, we've been there, and I know that it's not easy. I think in the conversations, though, the one thing I will remind folks is, there is a backstop on those developments, and it is those three commissioners. And as I've talked to folks and as I watched that discussion, it's just a reminder that none of these can be done in a vacuum. So even without a moratorium, if someone wants to develop one of these, they still have to go to the commission, they still have to get approval. They can't just start building one tomorrow just because they don't have a moratorium. And so I do think it's okay to remind citizens that if there's a development being considered you don't like, and it is going to have an impact on farmland, or you are worried about the wildlife, or the noise, or the property, then when that moment comes, express it, and the commission can vote against it and say, nope, this is not the appropriate development today. So there is a backstop whether they do this or not. But I hope they've thought that through. I don't envy their decision, but I do want to make sure they've looked at the long-term impacts, and not just the county, but the city of Topeka as they make that decision. So, you know, bless them, and I hope it goes well for them, and for the city of Topeka and Shawnee County. Second thing is, I just want to point out, last week, the League of Kansas Municipalities had our governing body meeting, which is comprised of about 30 different cities across the state of Kansas. Mostly it's mayors, but there's some city managers who represent their cities. And the larger cities of Kansas make up that 30 also, including Topeka, as we're the fifth largest city. And sitting in that room, there were about three different issues that came up in which they looked at the mayor and I and said, how did Topeka do that? Because you've been doing it for a while. We're trying to get it done here. And we said, oh, we'd be happy to tell you, right? And I point that out to say that we are doing a lot right. Yeah, we got problems, and we're making mistakes, and we're fixing some things as best we can as we go through it. But I also don't say that so I can pat us on the back, because two of the initiatives they brought forward were actually things that at one point came from our citizens. They were citizen, moved them forward, they did it, and then we put them in place and instituted them. So that's as much a testament to our citizens here in the capital city as it is to us sitting up here. But do know there are cities, including the bigger ones, who are looking at Topeka at times saying, tell us how you did it, because you figured that one out. And so that's just, not just good for us, but good for the citizens of Topeka for creating that sort of across the state. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hofer.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Just want to compliment everybody, the council and the staff that's participated tonight. We did good work, did good process, people brought things to the table, chewed them around if we needed to. I'm proud to be here. That's all.
Thank you. There is a need for two executive sessions tonight. If the city attorney will read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed one hour, to discuss employer-employee negotiations relating to one or more unions. As justified by KSA 754319B3, the meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff are necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations, interim city manager Neinstadt, and other staff that he deems necessary. And could we just waive the 10:00 PM rule now, just in case, as well? As well as the city council votes to waive the 10:00 PM rule.
Okay. Motion approved by Councilwoman McHale, your second. Councilwoman Hofer. Just all say aye, all in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
You got two of them? We're going to adjourn into executive session, ask the council members to make a quick, take a quick five-minute break if we can, so we can get started. Okay, we've concluded our discussions for our first executive session. There is a need for a second executive session. City attorney, if you'll read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed 15 minutes, to discuss matters deemed privileged under attorney-client privilege, as allowed under KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberation. City attorneys Amanda Stanley, Chief of Litigation Nick Jefferson, and other staff the governing body finds useful.
Okay, we've heard the need for a second executive session. Need a motion and a second? Motion by Councilman Duncan, second by Councilman Banks. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay.
That's my man.
Okay, we will recess immediately into this second executive session. We can start our deliberations as soon as Dan's out of here. I'm coming out. Okay, we've concluded our discussions in our second executive session. No actions been taken by the body. No further business coming before this body. This meeting is adjourned.